Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada.
Thank you, Mr.
Ms. Quigley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your agenda is in order, oh, your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
First time set aside for public comment, those wishing to speak to the board on a posted agenda item, now is your opportunity. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment.
Your next item is to approve your agenda. It is in order and ready for your approval. We would like to pull item number 37 from the agenda at the request of Hope for Prisoners, and we'll come back to you at a later date with a new agenda item.
Motion to approve the agenda with changes?
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Your next item is your General Manager's Report, and we do have a few items. First item is our Officer Recognitions, and we'd like to recognize some from Allied Universal. During their shift at the Bonneville Transit Center, Allied Universal Officers Dejanique Brown and Corinthia Yancy, are they here today by any chance? Can we have them stand up? And come on down? And we're going to tell a little story about them. They assisted an elderly female customer whose motorized wheelchair had stopped working. Without hesitation, both officers helped the elderly female into a manual wheelchair. Then they proceeded to push the inoperable wheelchair to the curb. The officers patiently waited with the woman until her friend arrived. Additionally, both officers lifted the motorized vehicle into the bed of a truck. The woman and her friend were extremely grateful for the assistance and expressed their thanks many times. Both officers showed great customer service, went above and beyond their duty to assist a stranded customer. So once again, let's give a round of applause in recognizing Dejanique and Corinthia.
I just want to say thank you for the recognition. It's great to be appreciated. Thank you guys for your acknowledgement.
Me as well, thank you. I appreciate it. It's good to be recognized for good work that we do. We do work hard, so feels really good to be right here, right now.
Thank you. We have one more recognition. We'd like to recognize an outstanding operator for TransDev. Now, there's, we want to recognize Armando Figuero, but unfortunately, he isn't able to join us, but his supervisor Sandy Neely is here to accept the award, so we'll ask her to start walking down, and we will read a little bit about Armando. He has been a paratransit road supervisor in the Las Vegas area for six years, and during that time with TransDev, he's displayed outstanding customer service and attendance, and keeps everyone calm during incidents or accidents. Mr. Figu, I'm sorry, Mr. Figuero is knowledgeable and sensitive to our paratransit customers as he has a thorough understanding of their needs by caring about, for his disabled mother. He was working on the night of October 1st, when he was informed that TransDev's paratransit operators could not pick up their passengers due to the situation on the strip. He radioed to dispatch to find out the names, phone numbers, and locations of any passengers who were stranded, and immediately contacted each person and made his way as close as possible to each of their locations. He did not finish his shift until every passenger was dropped off and home safely. So although Armando was not able to be here, we appreciate Sandy that you're accepting the award. Thank you very much.
Armando, he couldn't be here today because he has the flu today. He really wanted to be here today. More than likely, if he was standing here, he'd just say "thank you." And then he'd try to shuffle away and try to get back to the seat. But I'm glad that I'm up here to accept this award for Armando. Armando, he's one of them type of guys that I have on my staff that always goes above and beyond. This is not a job for him, this is his way of life. He take care of his mother that's disabled, and he always try to go the extra mile every day. Sometimes he tell me "thank you," I don't even know why he's telling me "thank you." But sometimes we need that. Sometimes we need those "thank you," because when we're having bad days as managers and supervisors, it helps us to keep going. There's a lot of things I want to say about Armando, but I know I'll be up here for the next two hours. So I'm going to end it and say "thank you," and God bless everybody in this room.
Very cool. Thank you, Sandy. And those are all of our recognitions for the day. We'll share with you that last month, we held our annual Southern Nevada Strong Summit at the Springs Preserve, gathering more than 130 attendees to discuss important issues such as the new and exciting things UNLV is doing to boost our economic competitiveness and the future of transportation through RTC's onboard study efforts. We also heard from Nevada Hand and Clark County Family and Social Services on the partnership to create affordable housing and enhance our valley's neighborhoods. One of the most exciting aspects was hearing from our keynote speaker, who was Oklahoma City Mayor Mick Cornett, who was named one of the five most innovative mayors in the U.S. by Newsweek Magazine. Cornett shared his experiences from his collaborative work advancing major infrastructure projects and championing important causes in Oklahoma City, which we can consider for our own region. He was a very dynamic speaker, and he, of course, offered to continue to be a partner and ally with us as we deal with some of the issues that he has dealt with, and lead some of the initiatives that he has led as well. So we're very lucky to have had him come speak with us, and I understand he is running for governor, so it'll be interesting to see. Here is a short recap video of our summit.
And today's event is largely about the work with Southern Nevada Strong and prioritize regionalism, and help make this a viable, exciting region to live in.
I truly believe Southern Nevada is on the cusp of transforming this region into one of innovation and real impact. We can only do that through collegiality and collaboration.
Some of the decisions this group, county, and our cities will make in the next few years will absolutely dictate what this community looks like in 20 years. No question about it. I've been fortunate to work with the RTC because we are, in my opinion, the best collaborator for regionalism.
You know, today's theme was really about collaboration, and I think that really set the stage for the work that we have ahead of us. You know, the first couple of years of Southern Nevada Strong at the RTC was really about kind of building some of the foundational work to make sure we can be successful in the work that we do. And we've been growing relationships and strengthening relationships with our partners and bringing new partners into the fold, and so I think we're really going to spend a lot of time strengthening that collaboration and that, this idea that we need to work together to realize a greater vision for not just ourselves, but the valley as a whole.
Great honor to introduce the Mayor of Oklahoma City, Mayor Mick Cornett.
At the end of the day, what people take away from this new initiative is changing the built environment to be built around people instead of cars. We're now have built hundreds of miles of sidewalks throughout the metropolitan area. We're building senior health and wellness centers, trying to get ahead of the baby boom generation as they grow older, to try to get them to live in place, to live healthy, extended lives on the wellness side of it.
If you're in this room, you have the ability to make a difference here, and you know that. So I just ask you to leverage that up, amp that up, because only in that way, take some risks, push boundaries, only in that way are we going to be able to do some of the things that we heard about that Oklahoma City has done, and that several other communities have done, and that we are actually starting to do, thanks to some of the leaders that we have and we've heard from today.
Very proud of that summit. Thank you, Raymond Hesse, and Tracy Larkin Thompson, putting this together. It was well attended, the speakers were amazing, and we look forward to more summits. That concludes your general address. And next on your agenda is your State Department Transportation Director's Report. I know Rudy Malafon is not available today, but we do have Deputy Director Tracy Larkin Thompson with us.
Making sure I hit the right button. Is it done? Okay, one of the first news, we'd like to say there has been a change in our Transportation Board. Tom Skanki has moved on to greener pastures, and our replacement is Virginia Valentine from down here. We're very pleased to have her on board. She's got a tremendous background, and I think it'll be very valuable to Southern Nevada and to the board itself. We're also saying goodbye to John Terry. He is retiring basically February 1st. His replacement has already been interviewed and should be announced within the next week. So most people or entities will be dealing with a new Assistant Director of Engineering over projects. On a federal date, the can has been kicked down the road again, so the continuing resolution, the short-term extension of the federal fiscal year 18 budget, was set to expire on December 22nd, and it's now extended to January 19th. So it did not include additional emergency relief funding for the last year hurricanes, and therefore, there's no associated offset, no $1 billion recession to USDOT, so for now. Infrastructure plans are coming, details are coming this week, and we will be working to meet with RTC and our other MPO partners to discuss potential impacts of that plan. We also are providing information to our congressional delegation on the savings to NDOT from refunding bonds. The tax bill that was passed removed the tax exemption for refunding bonds, so that's something that we're also following closely. The rapid rectangular flashing beacons has a patent issue. They've been used around the state, and because of that, it could limit the federal eligibility for that. However, NDOT does plan on continuing to use these devices. We have found them to be extremely effective, so it'll just be using more, it'll be state funds, not federal funds. Some project updates in Southern Nevada, the Garnet Interchange Public Meeting was held on December 12th, showing the design builder aims for interchange, and it will begin to, should begin construction in the next few months. On the Project NEON Public Meeting is set for January 24th at the historic Fifth Street School. And the next year, as most of you know, this is really the big year for I-15, and it will be called the main event. So we haven't gone tornado or carnado, or it's a little more routine. And the Tropicana and Las Vegas pedestrian bridges have officially been transferred, so from NDOT to Clark County. Thank you, Clark County. We do appreciate it, and our governor has let us know that he appreciates it. And then we have also completed the North Las Vegas Boulevard project, the upgrade on SR 604 from Cary Avenue to Craig Road. That's all I have, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Comments or questions, Mayor?
Tracy, I just had some questions about the funding and prioritization of the Boulder Highway project. That's important not only to City of Henderson, I think Clark County, and also to the city of Las Vegas as well, because that's an important connector. And we know that last year, there were eight deaths on the Boulder Highway by pedestrians, and so we just want to make sure that that remains a high priority for the Nevada Department of Transportation going forward. So I wonder if you could just speak to?
I'd be happy to.
NDOT's position.
Boulder Highway has been on there. It has been something we've been working on. We dedicated, dedicated safety funds to it last year. We have a project that is advertising now for about 1.4 million to address some of the more critical areas. We partnered 50% with the RTC on the study that is going on right now, and then we are ready to, when projects have been identified from that study, we are willing to put a couple million dollars towards the PE part of it, and then move forward on that. To, basically what we're looking for is funding, not funding, we're looking for the projects to be developed, and once we know what the scope is, then we'll be talking about the funding for it.
So as funding might, or as the project report comes out next summer, and they identify a number of issues that are important to community, but also to public safety, will there be resources available to be able to, or will we have to wait a cycle to be able to start moving some monies into those funds? I know that there were some other accounts in the, in the NDOT budget that were able to be funded with increased funding from revenues that have come in. I just guess I want to make sure that as these projects come forward, that it becomes a high priority, knowing that so many deaths occur on that road.
Boulder City won't be lost in the shuffle, and I guess, but we did have some money freed from the government service tax that was returned to us that had previously been diverted. That happened at the end of the legislative session, so in earlier prioritizations, it wasn't shown. So you'll see some additional funds shown in this, this more amendment to the RFTP. Also, the FRI money is coming in. At this point, it's only a couple million dollars for the first couple of years. That is in the US-95 project that's out there. We have always said that we are doing the major projects on there, and we have a list of the ones that are moving forward. And what you're basically seeing is a change in this request of, these projects were already there and on the books, but we have moved them forward. And I can go over some of those projects if you like, but I think most of you have seen them.
I'm just confident that you'll work with our staffs going forward to make sure that this is a priority. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you for that, both to Mayor and because part of Boulder Highway is in my district, as well as Commissioner Gibson's as well. So I know that with the study that will come out, you're paying for half of it that's being done by RTC. Actually, I was briefed yesterday, and so I think there's some really good programming in there. It's not just pedestrian safety, it's also looking at how the flow of traffic is, the numbers are down, what the proper design would be for both sidewalks and a variety of different things on that route. If at some point we, there's a potential for light rail on the corridor as well, so I hope that we will be looking for potential funding down the road for that as well, as we look at that interconnectivity within the valley. So I know the FRI money's not coming quite as high as everybody thought for the state side, but we need to make sure that we have that allocation somehow, you know, just align items so that doesn't fall off of the mind of somebody. I think that's really what we're talking about more than anything else, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Tracy.
Next on your agenda is your Consent Agenda, which is made up of items 5 through 38, and like we mentioned, we would like to pull item number 37.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next on your agenda is item number 39, which is to approve the amendment for Clark 18-06 to the 2017 to 2040 Regional Transportation Plan. I believe we have Raymond Hess to give you an overview.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Raymond Hess, Director of Planning Services here at the RTC. So back in February of this year, the RTC Board approved Access 2040, which is the Regional Transportation Plan. This is a federal requirement that we developed, this document, which shows all the transportation priorities out for the next 20-plus years, so it goes out to 2040 as the name implies. It shows not only federally funded projects, but it also shows projects of regional significance. And anytime there's a major amendment required, we have to go back and go out to the public for a public comment, and then do an air quality conformity determination, and then ultimately bring that amendment back before you for consideration for adoption. And so that's where we are today. We took this before the MPS earlier this week, we took it to the EAC last month, and both have recommended approval. The EAC did so conditionally, so that we could present it before you today on nonconsent. There are ultimately five different projects that are part of this project, or part of this amendment. The I-15 Harmon-Hacienda High Occupancy Vehicle ramps, this is a new project that was added to accommodate the Raiders Stadium. Another new project is the US-95 Northwest Package 3C. This project was currently in the Regional Transportation Plan, but it was moved forward from out-years to the 20, to the 2018 year. We also added in the current year's US-95 southbound ramp extension to City Parkway. This project resulted from ongoing I-515 US-95 Alternative Development Study. And then there were some changes to projects as well. So there was a fund change to I-15 and 215 system-to-system interchange. It increased the cost per financial management, cost estimates. There was also State Road 160 Blue Diamond Package 2, increased costs based on updated scheduling papers. Pleased to report that we did an air quality conformity determination for all of these amendments, and there was, there's no adverse impact that is a result of these proposed amendments. There was a public comment period that ran from December 12th to January 8th, and no public comment was received for against any of these amendments. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have, but if you have any particular questions, I might defer those to the Nevada Department of Transportation representative.
Very good. Questions for Raymond, Mayor Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hess, can you give us a timeline on the project additions? Your I-15 Harmon-Hacienda HOV ramps approximately, what are we looking at Wednesday in initial start on that, and what is completion? And the US-95 Northwest Package 3C, and what exactly is the 3C? And then lastly, the off-ramp at the 95 going eastbound to City Parkway, if you have any ideas of timeline?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you to Madam Mayor. Right now, currently for the, let's see, for Blue Diamond Package 2, for example, it's showing construction starting in 2018, which is why this amendment would be necessitated for that project. For, let me see, just scroll down through the next. Now, the one thing I will note too, this is when federal funding would be obligated for these phases, so that doesn't necessarily mean that groundbreaking will happen necessarily in this fiscal year, it could happen shortly thereafter, and as I'm sure all of you are aware, some of these construction projects may take years to complete, so an actual ribbon cutting may be a couple of years out, depending upon what the work schedule is on that. For the US southbound ramp extension at City Parkway, this is for preliminary engineering in 2017, and then for the construction phase would be in 2019 is when that would start, and it shows about $14 million for that phase. And then, let's see, for the I-15, 215 system-to-system interchange, this would be for construction in fiscal year 19. For US-95 Package 3C, and to give you an idea of what that project is, it says construct northbound US-95 to westbound 215 flyover, construct southbound US-95 to eastbound 215 flyover, and eastbound 215 to southbound US-95 ramps. So it's three-quarters, I guess, of the movement, more or less. And what's showing it for that is construction starting in 2018.
Okay.
And then for the Harmon-Hacienda High Occupancy Vehicle ramps, this would be for construction in 2020.
So if I might, Mr. Chairman, knowing that those probably have some sense of connectivity to the Raiders Stadium, if in fact, the county is able to keep the timeline on that season of 2020, isn't that a little late?
I might defer that one over to the Nevada Department of Transportation in terms of the timing and sequencing.
This is basically, we have already started money putting in for the NEPA process. As soon as the NEPA process gets done, we may be able to adjust the timeline, but we can't proceed with some of these until that part is finished.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, just Tracy, if I could ask, is there any way you can get back to this board just to let us know as the administration sets its budget? We know we have to wait on that, how this is going to proceed, if in fact, and are we having to borrow from other fund and projects to do that particular item?
At this time, we are not borrowing from others, it's dedicated funding in there in those years.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner?
Maybe just a follow-up on that. So if you can go back to your very first slide, that was the I-15 Harmon-Hacienda HOV ramps that you just mentioned?
Yes.
And that, I believe, was on a list quite, but down further, and it was moved up because of the Raiders Stadium component. Is that still accurate, Tracy? I think? That is correct. That was actually something that was originally identified in the study that the RTC did a few years ago.
The TIBP.
Yeah, the TIBP. And I'm just curious, what projects may have been bumped in order to move some of these up, not just this one, but some of the others? The projects haven't been bumped. Some of the money has been freed because, like the 3C phase of the 95 had been delayed. That's something that we had been looking at potentially combining with the project that was the D and E. We delayed it because of cash flow to manage that, but now with the freeing of the service, the government service tax, which we just got in the end of the last legislative session, that returned approximately, it was, I think, 17 million from the first one, about 30 in the second, so there's a fair amount coming back in that we are putting into these projects now.
Okay, so the government services tax came in, as you mentioned, late in the session, so it was just added back in.
Yes, and we can't count until it's actually dedicated to us. We can't count it.
Okay, and then there was some diversions from the highway fund, I believe legislatively again. Has that been stopped, or no longer are there diversions to the general fund?
I'm sorry, I don't, I can't answer that right now.
Okay, if you could check on that, because I was told that to balance the budget, that some funding had been diverted, and I'm hoping that that trend now ends so that they can go forward and actually have projects available. And then, do we have, do we do shovel-ready projects, both within NDOT as well as others? So at least we're moving along as best as you can while you have a NEPA going, that you're doing some of your designs, so that at least it's?
We try to have backup projects because of things, say, we have a project-
And then do we have, do we do shovel-ready projects, both within Endo as well as others? So at least we're moving along as best as you can while you have a NEPA going, that you're doing some of your designs so that at least it's.
We try to have backup projects because of things, say, we have a project that we plan on obligating in one year, and for whatever reason it slips, we don't have the right-of-way, something else falls through, we want to make sure that we have another project that we can put in.
And you can move up. Okay, that's good to know. And I don't know if we do, Raymond?
Yeah, and if I may, there are some logistical challenges with that. A lot of it has to do with the federal regulations. Typically, the feds like to see that you have all phases of the project programmed, either in the Transportation Improvement Program, the first four years, or the Regional Transportation Plan. So, you know, to Tracy's point, if you were to program the preliminary engineering and maybe right-of-way phases, they would also want to see the construction phase programmed as well. So, you know, a lot of what you see in this amendment is shifting what were out-year projects, moving them forward, but to just put in, for example, preliminary engineering with no identified right-of-way or construction phase tends to be problematic in the federal program. Now, obviously, there are other, you know, local funding sources where that might give you some liberties to do that, but it is a challenge that, you know, we're trying to work through with some of the Public Works Departments as well to figure out how we can have projects advanced through the federal system a little bit more seamlessly.
Are both organizations short engineers like we're running into or being able to grow some of our own? I'm told we're still short traffic engineers, civil engineers, those types of things. Are you fully staffed at Endo on that?
We are fully staffed, but we do have many upcoming retirements that's going to be causing some adjustments. So as I said, John Terry is retiring.
Right.
That will probably cause some shuffle. There will be the retirement of our chief roadway design engineer is retiring. One of our other lead design engineers is retiring this year. These people want a life.
Yeah. Can't say as I blame them, but it is something industry-wide that we're going to have to look at because of the talent that's going to be within probably five years retiring both local government as well as at the state level. And where do we replace those folks from? And then finally, with the federal government talking about some potential infrastructure dollars, my hearing or read of that, though, is it's really a reshuffling of dollars from one area to another, not necessarily an increase. Do we have anything on federal? Do you know anything, Trace, on that?
Would you please repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Federally, they're talking about infrastructure legislation, but what rumor-wise is, it's really just a moving from one infrastructure fund to another. It's really not an increase in funding, and I didn't know if you had heard anything with regard to that.
No, we have not heard anything different. It's one that we're watching very closely. We're watching to see where they're taking money from, what impacts we might see in that bill. And as I said, we have a meeting scheduled in the next few, the first week of February to get closer with our contacts in DC and go over some of the details coming up.
Okay.
And that does include RTC.
Yeah, we'll be traveling with Tracy back east. We did read that Elaine Chao, Secretary of Transportation, had some statements yesterday at CES indicating that they would be putting some emphasis on incentivizing innovation and public-sector-private sector partnerships. So as you know, we are prepared for that, thanks to the legislature in the last session. And we have actually been doing a lot of public pilot programs related to innovation, so we feel well-poised to have conversations related to that. And actually, today, we are meeting with the Undersecretary of Transportation or Policy, and we will share with them all that we do have going on.
Okay, good, because we don't want to make, we want to make sure I-11 dollars, for example, don't get moved from one place to another, and then that puts that at risk. So that's what you're monitoring. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, staff for comments, approval.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Your next item is item, oh, sorry, number 40, and at this point, we can pull item number 40. There is no need for closed-door session, which brings us to item number 41, which is your final citizens' participation period.
This is our second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Dorothy Barnes, good morning.
Good morning and Happy New Year. Good to see you all back. Congratulations to Mayor March. I should have hung in there. Maybe you'd have done something with that housing problem I was having up there. And I wouldn't be riding a bus, falling asleep, getting put off the bus for falling asleep early in the morning, and getting kicked out of a bus station for falling asleep. I'm 60 years old, and when you get older, sometime my grandmother used to rock all day and nod in her rocking chair. But what I'm addressing you all today is the problem of not being able to get my name off this program. I would not be homeless and falling asleep on the bus, which they keep saying is a safety hazard. And I sympathize with the security people. I've even invited them to sign this promissory note. I was here when Wackenhut was the first company that was employed by the bus company at the old bus station, when the marshals used to do security and I think you had a security agency by the name of Andy Fry at night, when the marshals would go off at 10:00. Then Wackenhut came on and they lost their bid, I guess, to Allied Bargain and now Allied Universal. And I don't mean for the security people to have such a hard time controlling people falling asleep, but we're not robots. And when your body has been exhausted to the point that you haven't had sleep in so many days and you get in a nice warm place, what it's going to do, it's going to take advantage of that nice warm cozy place, and your body's going to go to sleep. You can't, I've tried to keep my eyes out. I couldn't glue them open, but I've tried to do all kinds of stuff, you know, I've got to, you just don't know what you do to try to fight sleep, and sleep comes anyway, you know? So I mean, it's a very bad situation for the homeless people to be homeless, especially in this cold weather. You're out riding a bus to try to stay warm, especially these last few days when it's been raining, and I ended up with the flu and I had body aches, my eyeballs hurt, my whole body ached, and I called my doctor and he said, well, they can't get me into the 16, but you can go to the quick care. And I just, you know, I've been suffering through it. I'm still kind of, you know, under the weather with this cold, whatever this thing is hitting me. I did take a flu shot, but all that to be said, a lot of homeless people are falling asleep. I know there's a lot of stuff that goes on at the SST when it's closed at 10 o'clock. I remember when the bus company, the new bus company first opened, you couldn't even use the toilet, and I, this is ridiculous. How do you open a, have a 24-hour bus station and nobody can use the toilet? But then they finally push for us to be able to use the toilet. Then they finally, now they're open 24 hours at the downtown lobby, and praise God for that. Thank you all. I thank you all, all the new bus equipment, all the new buses. I believe you all really have a heart for the city and the passengers and customers that ride the transportation, and, you know, we appreciate everything you all have done. But it's a problem when you're homeless once again. My name shouldn't be on a program where they can lie and steal and run drug operations. And I'm constantly, I was at the police station yesterday. God bless you. Thank you. I hope we can get something done about this. We won't have to sleep on the bus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Suzanne Downs?
Good morning. My name is Suzanne Downs. I'm disabled. I'm visually impaired due to multiple sclerosis, and I'm a paratransit rider. I love paratransit. It's given me my independence, and I'm a member at the Blind Center of Nevada, and we're unstoppable. I know a lot of you have been to the Blind Center and you see how much we've grown. Our new building is going to be completed soon, and I just, I'm here today to, I believe, thank RTC for helping me gain my independence and to thank all the wonderful drivers and everybody that works for paratransit. I just find myself as a disabled person having a hard time obtaining employment, and I really want to get involved with paratransit. I wish there were more programs for those of us that are involved every day. And again, I was invited to come here today to share my views on paratransit and how we feel about them, so I hope I've been able to do that. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments. They are appreciated. Stephanie Veznik?
Good morning. As you may recall, my previous comments on paratransit, as well as the comments of my colleague at the December 14th meeting of the Commission, the RTC answered some of my questions in an email that I received on Tuesday evening by restating what they had previously said and not addressing my comments directly. I also noted the email was copied to all of the RTC Board Commissioners. I won't address each comment because I feel that would be repetitive. However, I would just like to touch on a few comments. One of their responses included the list of non-emergency medical transportation companies. I've been provided this list in the past. I've called the places on this list. They cannot meet my son's needs. He needs transportation to work, not to medical appointments. So the list does not help me at all. There is also another response regarding paratransit and fixed route expenses and how my numbers were different from yours. The numbers I provided in my previous testimony came from the National Transit Database. They are what the RTC reports to the federal government. I do not know why the numbers don't match. My colleague spoke to the Finance Department after the last meeting, and as far as I know, this question has not been answered. When the RTC paratransit service area was reduced in 2011, there was two main reasons written about it in the RJ and in the Sun. One was the significant economic downturn in Nevada, and two, due to the severe state budget cuts to Medicaid transportation funding, RTC paratransit ridership Medicaid patients increased. I understand reducing the service area must have been a very difficult decision for this Commission to make at that time. However, now in 2018 and seven years later, our economy is booming. Medicaid has restored funding to a company called MTM for Medicaid patient transportation. The rationale for reducing the service area in 2011 no longer exists in 2018. According to the email that everyone received in one of the attachments, it states, "The cost to restore the service area to the way it was back in 2011 for current clients at the average trip rate is $1.5 million a year." This would give many individuals opportunities to access their communities, which will provide new opportunities and enrich their lives. I ask this Commission to please add a discussion item to the next month's agenda of restoring the service area to the pre-recession service area. I do not believe that $1.5 million is too much money to change the lives of many, and I believe people with disabilities are absolutely worth the conversation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Elta Dupree?
Chair Brown, thank you again. Alita Dupree here for the record. You know, I love a good public meeting. Can't seem to get enough of them. So today I speak again about the matters of buses. Today, I again add to the numbers of buying passes through the Ride RTC app. I was able to accomplish this in a matter of seconds while a bus was inside on West Charleston. This is a program that works for me, helps me, especially being a disability, a person of disabilities, to manage things so that I will always have the fare that I need wherever I be so I can ride the bus. So let's keep working on this program and add the options to it to expand it. I am encouraged about the impending arrival of new buses, which will be helpful to me as they have more sideways-facing seats, and we can get more people on board and I don't have to worry about climbing stairs. And most of the routes that I take use the long 60-foot buses, but the 113 and the 110 still use double-deckers. So I'm looking forward to getting these new vehicles on the road. I read on the website in Power Transit about an impending pilot to begin in February, which will incorporate the rideshare. So I am encouraged about this, and I hope we will stay the course with this because I am an occasional user of the Veterans Medical Transportation Network. And I do not see this pilot as a punitive means to get people off of the vans, but it will complement the vans and add capacity where I am able and willing to ride in a rideshare vehicle. I'm doing it already. So this will help many of us, I hope, those of us who are veterans. I would hope that we would take that knowledge from this pilot and add it to those of us veterans who use the Veterans Medical Transportation Network so we can continue to help more people. So I believe this is an agency that is doing more because I am seeing it. And I'm not here all the time, but it's nice to know that when I get off a bus at the South Strip Transit Terminal, that I can open up my app and get an RTC bus to get toward my house. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board?
Chairman Brown, may I answer over here? May I answer Chris's question from before? I'd like to say that, no, there was no other funds diverted, but I was not clear in stating we received 75% of the GST back, so 25% is still being diverted.
Thank you. We'll close this portion of public comment. Thank you all. Happy New Year. This meeting is adjourned.